Okay, I think now is a good enough time to start. Thanks to all of the attendees who are now attending this session for the Bridging Transportation Researchers Conference. My name is Nick Wood. I am from the Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute. And this session was a special session kind of put together by the conference organizers. They reached out to a number of the former members of the Managed Lanes Committee. Given the fact that TRB kind of paused a lot of its activities over the summer and the fact that many committees did not hold mid-year events. A lot of folks who were part of that community, they wanted to engage, share research topics, et cetera, given the fact that we did not have a mid-year meeting. So this special session came together kind of in the last, I'd say, six to eight weeks as an outburst of that. I was a former research coordinator for that committee, so I kind of helped put everyone together. So we have a great session that's focused on managed lanes. We have presentations from both the East Coast, the West Coast, Texas as well, ranging on everything from like operations to issues of sustainability and other issues that relate to managed lanes. So, given that this is an overall big picture international conference, I'll just give a brief overview of managed lanes. For those of you that you don't know, managed lanes are kind of like a facility within a facility. The official definition is they are highway facilities or a set of lanes where operational strategies are proactively implemented and managed in response to changing conditions. In this case, sometimes there could be a tolling element, usually either in the case of use of dynamic pricing or time of day pricing, varying the prices according to what demand is like in real time or what historical demand has been. In other cases, providing some type of geometric design separation, whether it's using single striping or whether it's actually physically separating the managed lane from the other facilities, using different operational rules like restricting for car pools, restricting for electric vehicle use, which you'll hear later in this presentation. So really, managed lanes, I mean, how I look at it is like kind of taking a just a set of freeway lanes and doing a different variety of strategies, whether physical hard infrastructure or operational, to get better performance. So that's what those facilities are all about. It's a little bit different than, say, like managing the whole freeway, but it's kind of managing a subset, trying different strategies and seeing what works. So that's just a basic overview if you didn't know what managed lanes were. And we have four presentations and the first up that we have is Masfira Rahman. She is a graduate research assistant researcher with the Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute within the Freight Analysis Division. She has over three and a half years of experience at TTI and has worked on various projects related to transportation economics, supply chain and logistics, and travel behavior modeling. She is actually currently wrapping up her PhD in civil engineering with a focus on, I guess, transportation economics. And she's completed a related master's from the University of Texas at San Antonio. And she earned her bachelor's degree from the Bangladesh University of Engineering and Technology. I will pass it off to Masfira, so hopefully you'll be able to share your screen.
Thank you, Nick, for giving me the floor to speak. Okay, let me share my screen. Are we able to see the screen? Like?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Good morning, good evening to everyone, to people joining from, joining from the different parts of the world. So today I'm going to talk about the behavioral traits of managed lane chooser. So I'm a PhD student at Texas A&amp;M University. My primary academic advisor is Dr. Mark Paris. So I have been learning about this topic for the last four years about the decision-making of managed lanes. So this is about the decision when travelers are faced with two different choices between general lanes and the managed lanes. So I'm understanding, trying to understand the travel behavior. So this research is a collaboration among the Texas A&amp;M University, Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute, and Washington DC-based company Wested. So we have pretty much interdisciplinary team here. So we have professors from psychological and brain science. We have people from economics and transportation engineering. And thanks to Nikut, our session chair, he was also like involved with the part of the project. To start with, I will give a brief introduction about the managed lanes. So managed lanes, they require the travelers to either meet certain occupancy criteria to use the lanes or the travelers need to pay toll to use the lanes. So they are located usually at the middle parts of these facilities. On the either side of these lanes, we have like general purpose lane running in parallel. So every time travelers travel on these facilities, they encounter a choice. They get to choose between the two different options. So managed lanes are usually faster and more reliable compared to the adjacent general purpose lanes. So while we are doing this research, I will give a bit of like introduction. So we can see that the toll pricing models and the transportation planning models, they depend on the accurate prediction of the travel behavior, how much demand would be for these lanes, for this type of facilities. But these type of models are dependent on two different assumptions. So first is that they, they think travelers always make the decisions based on the toll purchase travel time savings. They know the toll rates, they know the travel time savings, and they make their decisions in between the two different alternatives. And the second is that these models think the travelers, every time they travel on such a facility, they make their decision in a rational and conscious way. But that is not the case in the real world because human beings are influenced by biases, emotions, and social pressure. And also inertia, for example. As you can see, people usually, they tend to use the same routes or same lanes again and again, and they stick to their same choices. So imagine yourself, you are sitting in a traffic and when there is an urgency, you have a meeting to attend on time. Then in that case, if you are a rational thinker, then you may prefer to choose the managed lanes to save some time. So this traveler right here, he's thinking he doesn't have any meeting until nine, so he can just stick to the freelance. So this is an example of rational decision-making. And when you have a very busy hectic day, or maybe you are thinking something else right now and in your subconscious mind, you may not think about your choices. So these type of travelers, they tend to use the same lanes again and again. So prior to this research, we have also studied the Katy Freeway Travelers in Houston over the period of two and a half years. So the specialty about this lenser, they have transponder readers on both the lanes, both on the general purpose lens and on the managed lens. And the general purpose lens has that travel time sign at the point of entry. And managed lens has the pricing sign that shows the toll rates depending on the congestion level and the time of the day. So the bottom line is that drivers had perfect information about these two different choices and we used to know their choices. And let's take a look into what the real world data from Katy Freeway travelers is showing. We can see that a huge percentage of drivers, like 79% of them, they never used the managed lens. They always stick to the like general purpose lines. And only small percentage of travelers, they always use the managed lens. So these two different types of travelers, we level them as automatic decision-makers or non-choosers. And the rest of the travelers, they've used both, both type of lanes at least once. So we categorize them as conscious decision-makers or choosers. So that is why we are interested in understanding what are the factors that are influencing their decision-making mechanism. So our primary objective was to categorize the traveler into two different groups, choosers and non-choosers. And then we predict the lane choice behavior of the chooser group and predict the lanes. And apart from that, we also will test the impact of the nudges on the intervention, for example, message or free trips. So we have three different phases of our research. Phase one included a behavioral economics experiment and a travel survey. So this survey was designed based on the previous studies or literature. And we, we have like six individual differences or personality trait variables of the questions and based on the survey responses, we score each of these category. And apart from that, we also recorded the times, number of times the participants clicked on a section and the, the time required to submit each of the section, like section and submit duration. And the phase two included a video-based driving study. I'm not going to go detail for the phase two because this was just to test the informational, the best set of messages to be used in the subsequent phases. So in the phase three, this included like tracking the trips of real world like travelers using a custom-developed app. And based on this, we extracted information like which lanes, which lanes and which roadway they have used. And also what are the exact travel condition, for example, travel time, travel time reliability, and the toll rates at the time of their travel. So we had 106 participants and we split into three different groups. We have treatment and control groups. Control groups receive no intervention. And the treatment group consists of two different groups, messes and free trip. Message group is to receive messes intervention. This is like typical messes that shows the comparison of the speed between the two different options. And the free trip group, they used to get like one of their weekly express lane trip to be free. So we have like the participants are almost evenly distributed in between three groups. And our study areas included nine freeway facilities in Dallas. These all facilities have general purpose lane and express lane running in parallel. And then we had the similar facility in Northern Virginia, I-495, I-95, and I-95. So we had wonderful collaboration with our software developer team who helped us develop this app named TTI Express Lane Logger. So all the participants, they had to install this app on their phone so that we can track their trips. And each of their trips, when they are, they travel on such facilities, were recorded and stored in the backend part of the, I mean, website. And then they had to keep it running in the background all the time and the trips are being recorded. And there is a message icon right here. This was just to send the messages for the message group participants. For example, on your next trip, the speed on the main lane is usually around this much and the speed on the general express lane is usually around 65. So based on the real world data, we set two definitions of our chooser and non-chooser. As per the strict definition, when all the trips made by the same participants are on the same lane and there is no trips on the other side of the lane, then they are non-choosers. So we have 11% of them. Since the, we have lower number of non-choosers as per the strict definitions, we used a more flexible definitions. If 95% or more of their trips are on one side of the lane, then we level them as non-choosers. So we, we have 26 of them. So then we tested the impact of intervention to, by checking the average number of trips and compared among the three different groups. Did participants receiving intervention make more trip than the control group? The answer is no, because they made like similar trips, not more. And also, we also tested if the participants receiving intervention made additional managed lane trips. That's why we compared the managed lane trips, average managed lane trips before the study, during the study, and after the study period. As we can see, like for the free trip groups, both in Texas and Northern Virginia, they made more managed lane trips during and after the study. And to model their lane choice behavior, we developed a neural network-based multitask learning model. So in our model, we had two parts. So there are two classification tasks integrated into a single model. So the first model is to classify the travelers into two different groups. And the participants who were predicted as choosers, as per the first model, will go to the second model. And we predict their choices as general purpose lanes and managed lanes. So the features used for model one, one, were participant level data. So the actual travel conditions that a traveler faced for a specific trip were averaged to part participants. So we have 106 samples for this. And for the second model, we have trip level dataset. So for that, each separate observation represent a single trip and we know the exact condition they are facing. So these are the features for, used for the model one. And these are the features that were used for the trip prediction model. Then we have the confusion matrix here. We can see that 19 out of 22 participants were correctly classified as chooser and non-chooser. And this much amount of trips were correctly classified with 79% accuracy for the chooser group. And then we have, we plotted the partial dependence plot and based on this, we were able to extract some of the like reasonable relationship. For example, the choosers made more managed lane trips when the travel time savings on the managed lane was higher and travel time reliability on the managed lane was higher. And also, we can see when the toll amount was high on the managed lane, they tended to avoid the managed lane and chose GPL instead. And also the choosers are the participants who had lower need for cognitive closer score. So that means the participants who had lower this score, they are more open to ambiguity and uncertainty. And then for the second model, we also found similar rational relationship. For example, when the participant chose more managed lane trips, and this is for the chooser group, when the travel time reliability on the managed lane was higher, the travel time savings on the managed lane was higher and the participants who had higher maximization score. That means that participants tend to maximize their choices to make the best choice. And the participants who took more time in each, each of the individual differences section of the survey, they tended to be like use the managed lane more compared to others. And now we have a different kind of analysis here. This is like based on the learning from experience. So as you can see, the traditional models, for example, discrete choice model, they tend to think that individuals respond the same way to travel time savings and toll over the time and their choice is stable, but that is not the case in the real world because people gain their experience and they may adjust their choice probability as they gain experience. So based on this, we, we utilized a Bayesian stochastic learning automata model for this. So first, we used a mixed logic model based on the observed data and we estimated the coefficient of utility. And then we compared the chosen and the alternative lane utility. So we have the indifference band of 0.35. If the utility difference is less than this value, then we assume that in their next choice, there will not be any update because the difference is smaller. When the difference is higher than the indifference band, then we will compare the utility of the chosen and the alternative lane. If the utility of chosen lane is higher than the other lanes, then we assume it as a favorable outcome and otherwise it is unfavorable. And then we have two different parameters. For favorable, we have reward and the unfavorable, we have penalty parameters. And at the end, there is an algorithm that we used to update their probability of next choice based on the reward and the penalty parameter. If there is a reward, then the probability of the current lane choosing will increase in their next choices. And then we estimate the choice propensity. And at the end, we will have a distribution of reward and penalty parameter for each of the participants. For example, on the right side, we can see the reward parameter for all the participants are there. We have right skew distribution and also we have the penalty parameter distribution as well. Then we compared the reward and the penalty parameters for each of the group. As you can see, the free trip group has the highest penalty parameter compared to other groups. That means they have the strongest learning from negative experiences. And also message group participants had the weakest behavioral change. We can say that informational nudges has less impact. Coming to the conclusion, we can say that our model is successful, but based on only 106 participants and traveler individual differences and average travel conditions were successfully utilized to categorize travelers into two different groups with 86% accuracy. And we can also predict their trips with 79% accuracy. And free trip group learned mostly from the negative experiences while the message group showed minimal behavioral changes. And next, we plan to expand our work with possible operation, I mean cooperation with ML owner or operator. Maybe we can collect a similar kind of data as one was done in the phase one of our study. And then we can use our model and we will compare with their models and see how it goes. And I'm grateful to Federal Highway Administration for funding our research. Special thanks to Valentine Bing and Karen White. And we are also grateful to SINTA, Transurban, and NTTA, and Virginia DOT for providing us assistance in tracking the transponder records. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So if you have any questions, feel free to enter in the chat. Masfira did a fantastic job with the presentation, a good job and pretty much, you know, being very clear with your findings. You had a lot of technical information in there. So I want to kind of touch on, you know, some of the key takeaways from this. So we had, you know, probably at least like what, 79% of drivers never switched lanes at all. 17% were in the choosers who kind of used both the managed and general lanes at least once. Could you elaborate on, you know, any takeaways that are specific to travel demand forecast, travel demand models? Like what would you change within the model itself? Given that if you had better data, what are the variables that you would most likely focus on?
Okay, so right now I didn't look into the travel demand models. I only understand the travel behavior, but what I think was travel time, travel time savings and travel time reliability and toll pricing, those are the most important factors. So different persons are responding to these factors in a different way. So maybe we can integrate this behavioral perspective into this, this type of model.
Okay. And in your presentation, you had very strict definition, definitions for who is a chooser versus who was not. And the fact that the non-choosers were someone who didn't take any other trip whatsoever. Did you look at, you know, instances where you had maybe a group of people, let's say, within a six-month observation period that may have taken just a very small amount, like one or two trips of the other lane type? I mean, was there a significance in looking at the, the folks who did it rarely? Or was it just clearly like the choosers who were equally balanced or the choosers who did, you know, very little difference?
Yeah. So first, we tried to look at the strict definition because somebody who doesn't have any trip in on side of the lane. But we can see that the percentage is very low, like 11%. So in that case, the model didn't go well. So we tried to switch it to the like flexible definition. So based on that, if someone made like 95% or more of their trips on one side of the lane, then we will like tag them as non-chooser. So we tried to stick to the flexible definition. So in that case, yeah, we had like higher percentage of the non-chooser. So we tried to level them as non-chooser, but we also had a separate model that we don't have any, I didn't include the analysis here, but we didn't have any level at all. So we feed all the participants in the single model and we don't specify who is the chooser and who is the non-chooser. But the model will tell it itself, like based on their choices, any specific situations.
Okay. And we have a question entered in the chat here for the group that got the free trips. Were the free trips different than their regular trips?
Yeah, the free trips where they used to get like one of their express lane trip to be free in each of the week. So every, every week they get to choose which trip they wants to be free.
Got you. And can you elaborate on any of the psychological traits of the, the choosers that you found? I don't think you had that in your presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Must I miss that?
Let me pull that up. Yeah, can you see the six personality traits here?
Yes, like, like demographics. Did you touch on any demographics at all?
Yeah, we tested the demographic characteristics, but that didn't, that was not found to be significant. That, that's why we, yeah. So that means consciousness, these peoples are more likely to be chooser because they think in a more intuitive way. And these participants need for cognitive closer. That means people are more, the person with the lower score are more open to ambiguity. But the one with the higher score, they don't, they want, try to find the definite answer to his questions. And for example, this third variable right here, this is the maximizer person are the participants who tend to maximize their utility rather than a satisfying, satisfying choice. And this tolerance, they are more prone to like the degree at which people are willing to take the risk. That is the risk tolerance. And general mental ability, the higher the score, people understand and solve problems the better. And same for the cognitive reflection task, they are more prefer to reflective question rather than the intuition. So they are more likely to be chooser. So our hypothesis was like setting it in this way.
Okay, got another couple of questions in the chat. Hopefully we can answer these in the time allotted. How are the traits measured and used as features in your model?
How were the traits were measured and used as a feature senior model? Okay, so we had a set of questions that was defined in the previous literature. They already defined these characteristics in the previous studies. So we asked them the same questions in the survey and based on their responses in the survey and we scored their disabilities, like characteristics. And we use this scores in the model.
All right. And the last question we have here, I think this is kind of touching on a future work that Mark Burris is looking at. As far as recommendations and next steps, what type and quantity of data would be the most beneficial to model at this large scale to achieve acceptable accuracy for forecasting?
Okay, let me read it. It's the biggest step for trying to bridge the gap where it's saying as operators and what traditional rational behavior choice model used to model traveler behavior on as per as a recommendation. Try and quantify the data would be most beneficial to model to achieve acceptable accuracy or forecasting. I think toll price, travel time savings, travel time reliability are the most important factors proven for my model. And also we have some, also found some of the good relationship with the psychological constructs variable as well. But it is really difficult to score and measure this type of psychological variables in for practical implication. So what we can see is we can just use the travel condition specific factors. For example, travel time reliability, we do not incorporate in, in our current practice, so we can use that as well.
All right, good response, but also I want to just, I was involved in this study a little bit. I mean, the big thing with the phase three, we only had a little bit over 100 people and it's very hard because this was a longitudinal study. This went over many months, you know, over a year of trying to get both stated preference and reveal preference data from individuals, which is actually very hard to get. So it's really just getting a bigger sample size and Mark is trying to apply for more research funding to get a bigger sample pool over a longer period of time. And hopefully, you know, not just getting people involved in the study, but keeping them involved and progressing and getting enough data where you can kind of observe those changes over time. But that's a good context. So thanks, Masfira, for answering all those questions. I know this is incredibly complex stuff, but whenever I bring up this topic, it gets a lot of interest, especially in the modeling community because, you know, data is the most essential input into a trouble demand forecast. So thanks for that context, kind of starting out with the modeling and the behavior. Now we're going to get more into the application with various facilities. So our next speaker is Daniel Nickelbein. He is from the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, MBTC. Is that correct? I got that right. Sometimes, sometimes I call it an authority by mistake and there's a lot of different authorities and commissions and I just want to make sure I get that right. So Daniel is the commuter choice and policy program manager at the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. He manages MBTC's commuter choice program, an innovative grant program that reinvests whole revenue generated on two Northern Virginia interstates, I-66 and I-395 into public transit projects. Prior to joining MBTC, Daniel worked as a consultant for Trans Systems and has also worked for the Council of Governments in Chicago, as well as the Broward County MPO in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. And has also worked uh for the Council of Governments in Chicago, as well as the Broward County M P O in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Daniel, I'll leave it off to you.
Thank you, Nick. And can everyone see my screen?
I think we see your screen and also the notes, so I think we need the presentation part.
Right, let's. Is that better?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, uh good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for having me. My name is Daniel Nickelbein. I am the. Commuter Choice and Policy Program Manager with the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. Uh I'm excited to present to you today on N V T C's commuter choice program. So I'll start with some information about the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. At N V T C, we provide funding, facilitation, coordination and stewardship. For public transit in several uh of the Northern Virginia suburbs in the Washington, D C area. Uh our mission is to promote regional coordination to plan, coordinate and secure funding for transit systems. In Northern Virginia that are financially sustainable and high performing. Uh our region has a well-developed transit network that includes a variety of transit providers, both large and small. Uh the largest uh is Wamata, the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority, uh which went runs Metro Rail. As well as the region's largest bust, uh bus system, Metro Bus. Uh both metro and uh Metro Bus operate in D C, Northern Virginia and Maryland. Uh we also have the Virginia Railway Express, which operates two commuter rail lines connecting the Northern Virginia suburbs with. Uh the Washington D C core and key employment centers in uh dense areas in Arlington and Alexandria in Northern Virginia. Uh finally, we have six local bus systems in Northern Virginia that provide a mix of commuter and local service. Uh N V T C manages state and regional funding for five of these systems. Uh and provide technical assistance and policy guidance for transit operators and local governments in the region. Uh we also manage and administer the commuter choice program, which is what I will be talking about today. Uh first, and you got some, some of this from um. Um a sphere of presentation, but a little context on Northern Virginia's express lane network. Uh the backbone of the highway system in Northern Virginia is anchored by three interstates, I sixty-six, I four ninety-five and I three ninety-five ninety-five. Uh I, I four ninety-five is known as the Beltway. Uh commuter choice program is funded through tolls collected on two of these expressways, I sixty-six and I three ninety-five ninety-five. Uh on I sixty-six inside the Beltway, there are only general purpose lanes. Uh so tolls are collected on all vehicles on I sixty-six. Uh traveling eastbound, which is towards D C between five thirty and nine thirty A M. Uh and between three and seven P M westbound, traveling out of D C uh Monday through Friday. Um and I would note that vehicles with uh three or more people are exempt from paying the toll. Um with a uh the proper Virginia transponder. Uh on I sixty-six outside the Beltway, travel on the general purpose lanes is free, while the express lanes are told at all hours every day. Um on I three ninety-five ninety-five, travel on the general purpose lanes is free. Uh with told, express lanes open for northbound travel towards D C in the morning. Uh and southbound travel or from D C in the afternoon and evening. Uh like on sixty-six, travel with three or more people uh in the vehicle is free on the express lanes. Those are our two uh corridors uh that are the focus of our commuter choice program. Oh, there we go. Uh the, so the commuter choice uh. Program uh receives funding from tolls collected on sixty-six and I three ninety-five. Uh and is a partnership between N V T C, uh the private toll operators, the Commonwealth of Virginia and our local jurisdictions and transit providers. Uh the arrangements for this funding are outlined in memorandum of agreements that we've, uh whoops. That we've executed with the Commonwealth of Virginia, specifically uh Virginia's Commonwealth Transportation Board. Uh which is the state's policy and programming body, uh as well as separate P three agreements. Uh that the state has executed with the toll road concessionaires. Um our program uh M O As for both the sixty-six and three ninety-five ninety-five corridors. Uh were all completed within the executive branch of state government. I E, the program is not referenced in Virginia code and is not subject to any sort of legislative approval or um legislative tweaking. Uh the M O As that we've executed with the Commonwealth include a funding payout schedule for approximately nine hundred million dollars. Over forty years in the I sixty-six corridor and approximately two point seven billion dollars over sixty-eight years. In the I three ninety-five ninety-five corridor. Uh currently receiving approximately seventeen million dollars per year in each corridor. A number that escalates two and a half percent annually through the life of both agreements. Um. Localities and transit operators are the eligible applicants for uh funding. And those are the entities that receive funding. Each year, we open a call for projects for an alternating corridor, either sixty-six or three ninety-five. Uh so this fall, we'll accept applications for projects located along the I sixty-six corridor. And next year in twenty twenty-six, we will solicit applications for projects along the I three ninety-five ninety-five corridor. So a key component of the commuter trace program is eligibility and there are several parameters. That a potential project must meet in order to be eligible for funding. Uh so any project we fund needs to benefit uh people paying the tolls. Since in Virginia, tolls are user fees, uh in contrast to taxes. Uh taxes which require legislative approval, uh tolls do not. So a potential project must demonstrate that it can move more people through the corridor, uh either on the expressway in question. Um or through a parallel road or transit route in the peak period, peak direction. And create viable and effective travel options, supporting more efficient travel and potentially moderating or lowering toll rates. Uh with so, within those stipulations, the program can fund a variety of transportation improvements. Including new or enhanced bus service, transit capital projects, newer enhanced rail service, access to transit. Uh T D M efforts as well as other roadway uh operations and intersection safety projects. Uh projects must be able to obligate funding within two years and fully expend funds within five years. Uh and funding awards are between two hundred thousand and twenty million dollars. Uh transit service projects or or service um service operation enhancements are limited to twenty-four months of funding at a time. Uh and must recompete for funding every two years. So when we hold a call for projects, we first review all proposals for eligibility and then score. Um all eligible applications. Uh most of the possible points are related to corridor improvement goals of moving more people. Providing travel time savings and enhancing transportation connections. Uh the biggest factor in the evaluation process is the efficiency by which a project will move more people. Uh in the peak period or P and peak direction. Um so additional people moved relative to the associated number of vehicle trips. Uh we refer to this measure as person throughput and it gets at the heart of what is the commuter choice program. Moving more people through the respective corridor as efficiently as possible. Um. Other factors in the scoring methodology look at mobility, travel options and reliability aspects of the program's goals. Travel time savings for project users relative to non-told travel connections between designated regional activity centers. And equity emphasis areas as well as um promoting diverse modes of travel. Uh not part of the M O A with the Commonwealth, but important to our commission. Was a project's ability to absorb trips that might be priced or congested off the expressway onto parallel arterios or local streets. Uh we also score for cost effectiveness or the funding requested per year relative to the benefit of the project. Which helps smaller projects requesting less money more effectively compete for funds. Uh and finally, we allow each applicant to identify their top priority project, which is awarded a small number of additional points. A public engagement is a key uh aspect of the commuter choice program. And we solicit public feedback on the projects under consideration for funding each year in a variety of ways. Uh we encourage public feedback via a simple to use online survey form that has resulted in tremendous success. And the most recent public comment period for projects under consideration for funding. Uh that concluded earlier this year, uh we received over four hundred and fifty comments on the projects under consideration. Uh we ran targeted online ads, encouraged our jurisdictional and transit agency partners to spread the word about the public comment period. Uh and we also held a public hearing, all with the goal of soliciting meaningful public feedback on proposed projects. Uh now I'll touch a bit on what we've funded since the program began in twenty seventeen. Uh so since the start of the program, we've invested over two hundred twelve million dollars in seventy-two unique projects across the two corridors. Uh with funds awarded to fifteen different entities. The majority of funding or approximately hundred forty million has gone to new or enhanced local or commuter bus service. Uh on their respective corridors. We've also funded rail capital improvements, including new metro rail station entrances and enhanced V R E commuter rail stations. Um we've also purchased dozens of new buses for the region's transit providers. Funded a variety of T D M and commuter incentive programs. Uh helped construct several new park and ride lots and are helping to fund a bus rapid transit line in Fairfax County. Uh so this is a visual representation of some of the projects that commuter choice has funded. Um Northern Virginia's built environment ranges from um quite dense and transit-rich areas. Uh in uh Arlington and Alexandria, very close to Washington, D C. To a lower density exurban areas that rely on commuter bus service. Uh to provide connections to key employment areas um in and around the region's core. Uh so uh commuter choice has funded a unique variety of projects in all of those areas. Um from local buses running on busy city streets every fifteen minutes to the construction. Uh of new park and ride lots that provide those long haul uh commuter buses um with service to the inner core. Um I'd also note that commuter choice is unique um compared to most grant funding programs in that we can fund both capital and operating projects. Uh as long as a project can demonstrate the requisite benefits to toll payers on the respective corridor. Uh a note here on how we work to maximize benefits from the program. Uh with a relatively small pot of funds coming available for new projects each year. Um so we limit uh those previously mentioned transit service enhancements or operations projects to twenty-four months of funding at a time. Uh requiring them to recompete for funding every two years. Uh if a transit enhancement project isn't moving enough people through the corridor, um it won't be renewed for additional funding. Uh we're also focused on ensuring selected projects benefit corridor toll payers. Uh which we accomplish through a data-focused and transparent scoring methodology. While also putting in place requirements, reporting requirements uh throughout a project's lifecycle. Finally, we encourage applicants to consider capital projects that have a longer horizon of delivering benefits. Uh projects like enhanced rail stations, park and ride lots, new buses and bike share stations. Another important aspect of the program is project accountability and program integrity. Ensuring that selected projects are meeting the goals of the program and providing bang for the buck. Uh once projects are underway, recipients must submit quarterly and annual performance reports. Uh each project in green agreement includes the person throughput estimate that was the basis for uh the project's scoring during the evaluation period. Uh we then report to the state each year on the predicted versus actual benefits of the projects that we funded. Um and all of those reports uh measuring project effectiveness are available on our website. Uh each year, we also measure the anticipated benefits of both the most recently approved program of projects. And the estimated realized benefits of all projects uh that have uh are currently or have been in operation. Uh for the twenty-six, twenty-seven program of projects that was approved earlier this summer. Uh we anticipate um over thirty-eight hundred weekday project trips. Once all projects are in operation, that will result in twenty-two million fewer uh annual vehicle miles traveled. Uh a cumulative two point four million dollar um savings in annual uh fuel costs. And fifty-three thousand hours of travel time savings annually. Uh when we look at the program's cumulative impacts over time since twenty seventeen. We see tremendous benefits to Northern Virginia's economy and quality of life. Uh hundred and thirty-five million fewer vehicle miles traveled, over two hundred car crashes avoided. Forty-six million dollars in economic benefit from reduced travel delay and nearly twenty million dollars in fuel cost savings to consumers. Um we are eager to see these numbers continue to grow over time as the program advances each year. And that concludes my presentation. Uh and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Daniel, for that uh very good presentation. Uh I think we've already had a uh question pop up, pretty much something I was gonna touch on. What's the long-term plan for funding these transit improvements after the express lane concession ends?
Uh yeah, that is a good question. I will um openly sort of acknowledge that I don't think we have discussed. Because the terms of both of the M O As are are so long, um the sixty-six M O A has, I think, thirty. Two or thirty-three years of uh funding left and the three ninety-five ninety-five M O A has. I think sixty-two or sixty-three years of funding left. Um we have not um really discussed what happens oh uh when the um concessionaire. Agreements and um. Yeah, I am, that that it's there's just, it's a, it's a long uh timeframe, so um we have not really uh discussed that.
So kind of a follow-up question that I had to that, uh given how capital funding often requires a dedicated commitment over pretty much a fairly considerable. Point of time. However, uh with these concessions, uh sometimes you might have a revenue shortfall. Being either like a bad economy or let's say another pandemic, God forbid, hits. Uh are there any contingencies involved in that? Is there like additional insurance that you kind of make the transit agency have to carry out? The uh capital program?
So the the payments that we received, uh that we received for both corridors are guaranteed. Even if toll revenues don't hit um what the expected uh expected number may be. So we we did reach a scenario during the pandemic when um when toll revenues were not um. Uh you know, th- there were less, you know, cars travel on the express lane, so um you know, we were not hitting the numbers, but um. V dot did make up the Virginia Department of Transportation, did make up the difference in uh in funding. Um we do require uh during, you know, uh an application, say for a capital project. We do look at uh financial commitment of the applicant uh overall. And we do sort of assess their ability to uh, you know, deliver the project. And so if we were during the application review, if we were to see uh an application that um. Had a large gap in identified funding, um you know, that would probably raise some some red flags for us in terms of. Um the applicant's demonstrated ability to to fully fund the project.
All right, we had another question pop up in the chat. Uh how are the regional economic benefits uh from travel time savings calculated? Are there other ways to measure uh that benefit?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So we, we use the value of time um. Uh metric um and then uh calculate a um. Uh an annual uh, we, the delta between uh in time savings between a um a trip. Uh for each project, a trip on the um toll uh up using the project and then in the non-told facilities. Um without the project. And so then we, we end up with a um a a a number of hours that um. Uh are saved as a result of uh all projects in the program and then multiply that by the um value of time. Um measure that comes from, I think might be the Bureau Economic Statistics, not sure. But um basically uh travel time saved multiplied by um. Uh uh the value of time. Um in terms of other ways uh that benefits region, the regional economy. That is sort of the, the metric that we use. Um. We, we are always looking for other ways. We are always looking for other ways to demonstrate the value of the program. And so, you know, certainly, you know, we look at, you know, are happy to look at a variety of of ways to measure besides the, the kind of metrics that we use. So there are ideas, you know, for, for demonstrating that. I'm happy to, happy to talk further.
Okay, another question. Does this program result in changes to public support for tolling and pricing?
Good question. The, you know, the toll, tolling rates here can be quite large. I mean, we've seen during, you know, really congested times in the AMP going northbound and, or, or eastbound, tolls can be from, you know, thirty-five, forty dollars to get from end to end. People obviously don't like paying tolls and certainly don't like paying tolls when they are that high. That said, it's been a, the program has been a, a way both for us to encourage, you know, alternate modes of travel, whether on the, the bus or on the train, and for, you know, transurban and, and other, you know, entities who operate the tolls to basically tell folks that they have options. So, you know, if you don't want to pay the thirty-five-dollar toll to get from, you know, outside I sixty-six at the Beltway all the way to D.C., you know, you can hop on an omniride commuter bus for twelve bucks that might be covered by your employer anyway. So I don't, you know, I don't know if we can really demonstrate that the program has resulted in a, you know, public support for tolling. People don't like to pay tolls in general, but I think by offering an alternative, we are able to sort of mitigate the impact of those higher tolls by offering folks another way to get to their destination without paying those tolls.
All right, and another question from me. So you, you kind of touched on the project selection process and the evaluation. I kind of want you to dive in a little bit with that. So what's the process the agency uses to validate the numbers reported by the agency? So for example, the project says, we're going to increase person throughput. Is there any modeling, any analysis, validation on your end to kind of look into those numbers while you're evaluating it?
Yeah, there is. So we, the, it's sort of an iterative process going back and forth with the applicant. So they propose an initial number and methodology in their, in their application. And different applicants use sort of different methodologies for calculating how they, how they arrived at that number. We do then kind of review that internally, and if using sort of professional judgment and past experience, if we think the number that was provided was too high, or we disagree with the methodology that they're using, we'll go back to the applicant and request revisions. You know, probably the easiest example of this is if, you know, if a project is proposing to add, you know, commuter bus, you know, a system wants to add, you know, two morning inbound and two outbound afternoon trips. You know, they might look at existing ridership on, you know, the route, and then put in a, a small growth factor to propose how many people will be moved as a result of the new trips. We might say, you know, hey, I think this, you know, this growth factor is maybe a little too large, and, you know, we request you revise it down a little bit. So there's always some back and forth between us and the applicant to come to an agreed-upon number. Because ultimately, the number, the throughput increase number goes into the project agreement, and again, gets reported to the state every year. And so, you know, applicants certainly want to have a competitive application with a high throughput application, a high throughput number. They also need, at the end of the day, then, to demonstrate performance at, you know, coming close to or meeting that number once the project is online.
All right, and one more question for me. I know this is an issue in Los Angeles with their express lanes, because they have a similar program to what you're doing. In terms of like expending funds and building out what you said you were going to do, I know you mentioned that for future projects, you have ways to kind of like, you know, ding applicants for that. But have you run into any issues with applicants expending funds once they're allocated?
Yes, you know, in particular with, with capital projects. I think this is probably a challenge for many grant funding programs. You know, applicants maybe will get a little overeager. A schedule, a, a, a schedule, you know, that is maybe too optimistic is included. And, you know, you run into a variety of challenges, whether it's, you know, right-of-way acquisition, or, you know, delays in the, you know, P E or final design process. So, yeah, I, I think like most grant programs, we have run into challenges expending the funds. We also have the five-year window, which, you know, other programs have a bit more flexibility. You know, we, we, we do require that all funds be expended within five years. And so we are always looking at ways that we can, you know, speed up the project delivery process. And, you know, during the application process, ensuring that projects that ultimately get funded have a reasonable likelihood of fully expending the funds within five years.
All right, awesome. Thanks for your presentation, Daniel, and thanks for answering a lot of those questions to the folks in the audience. If you have any future questions for our remaining two presenters, feel free to enter it in the chat box, and we will get to that. So our third presentation, we will move from the East Coast to the West Coast, and we'll go with Marali Ramuja. He is a deputy director of toll systems and tranpec engineering with the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority in San Jose, California. He has had diverse transportation engineering and planning experience on a range of subjects, including managed lanes, land use planning and analysis, traffic engineering, systems engineering, and capital project development. Marali is the managing and operations manager for the Silicon Valley Express Lines Program, and is a chair of the California Toll Operations Committee. Marali, I will hand it off to you.
Thank you, Nick. Let me share my presentation. Okay, are you able to see my presentation and hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Nick. I'm very excited today to share a little bit about the Silicon Valley Express Lines Program that Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority, also known as V T A, is implementing. A key aspect of this implementation is that we also take sustainability goals into account as part of the implementation process. And today I will share different aspects of that in today's presentation. Okay, here we go. For any international audience, the, we are centered in San Jose as part of Silicon Valley from the San Francisco Bay Area region, and we are located in the northern part of California and USA. We have been developing the Silicon Valley Express Lines Program over several years. The program was approved in, in two thousand and eight, and it began operations in, in, in two thousand and twelve. And it consists of many different aspects of the program, including three carpool, carpool direct connectors as part of our system. The program itself is being delivered in phases. And so our first phase began operations in two thousand and twelve. There are many, many more phases that are currently online to be delivered in the next few years. So just to set a context to, as to who we are, V T A is both a congestion management agency, as well as a transit service provider, including bus and light rail system. So we are in a unique position to be able to deliver both these goals of addressing congestion and climate goals as part of the Silicon Valley Express Lines Program. The program itself offers commuter travel choice to, to those who are using the system, and, and to, you provide travel time reliability, and which then results in the generation of express lanes revenues, which then can be used to maintain the, the facility in terms of operations, to pay for any financing, to use funds for system replacement, and any other net revenues remaining to support transit operations. The, the program consists of single and dual-lane express lanes. The single-lane express lanes can vary depending on whether it's a conversion project of a carpool lane to express lanes, or a general purpose lane to an express lanes, or, or, or an additional lane that currently doesn't exist, but that would be prices in express lanes. As for dual-lane express lanes, the scenario is that there is already an existing carpool lane that would be converted to express lanes, and, and we would add another lane in addition to that. Implementing an express lanes program is becoming extremely complex. That's what I would say over the last couple of decades. It's, the, the goals of the program definitely in California has changed from just managing congestion and ensuring travel time reliability to also address many other goals, such as the climate goals needs to be preserved, and, and there needs to be sufficient revenues to support various different programs, including equity programs and many other programs. There's so much ask on what is needed to, in delivering an express lanes program, where it has moved from just focusing on operations to delivering other, fulfilling other goals. This challenge is stemmed from the fact at the state level, there are some guiding principles that dictate what needs to be done, including focusing on reducing greenhouse gas emission targets for the regions, metropolitan regions, as well as following strict environmental requirements or standards to reduce vehicle miles traveled on any projects that we are implementing. And, and the, and in a overarching way, the, the funding aspects of all these projects are very strict nowadays. And it's, and centered across the fact that, you know, the climate goals achieved in delivering these projects. And a lot of them is centered around if we can support transit or, or use of other alternate modes of transport. Just a little perspective on greenhouse gas emission. I think California is doing a reasonably good job in this. The, there is about two million electric vehicles right now. So it is becoming very common to see electric vehicles wherever you live, or including the usage in the express lanes. And it is becoming more mainstream that currently, for example, this clean air vehicle decal, there's about five hundred thousand eligible vehicles running around now with those decals that allows them to use a carpool lane or, and most express lanes to get a toll discount. Now, that's going to disappear starting October of this year. The, there are many mitigations, V M T mitigations that's been identified to, to address any lane additions that we might have as part of an express lanes project. And the mitigations include using toll revenues to support transit, mobility wallets, you know, really putting money in people's wallets to be able to use those money to use other forms of the modes of transportation, really influencing their travel behavior. There are newer types of mitigation, such as providing housing, that is being looked at in California, as well as a mitigation bank. You know, mitigation bank is like a central repository where you, where you pay for fees for increased V M T, and those, that repository could be disposing funds to projects that really helps with transportation demand management or other aspects of the climate goals. One example that I can give at V T A is that we currently have a Phase Four express lanes project that's circled in the, in the map that is currently ongoing. And in order to reach these climate goals as part of a low-carbon solution, the board has approved and pledged up to fifty percent of the annual net revenues to be set aside to fund transit operations for the life of the facility. So here is one model and example where pricing of the express lanes to manage congestion, as well as to support climate goals kind of go hand in hand. In, in delivering the Silicon Valley Express Lines Program, I had mentioned earlier that we have a hybrid of various different types of facilities, including single-lane express lanes and dual-lane express lanes. So the, the decision whether it should be single lane or dual lanes really needs some attention from various different areas. And that, that is what I'm trying to highlight in this table. And so often when we add a lane, especially in the case of dual-lane express lanes, the focus really is in the sustainability area to say that there is going to be an increase in vehicle miles traveled. And, and as such, there definitely is going to be greater V M T impact compared to a single-lane express lanes. However, you know, there are other aspects of the dual-lane express lanes, such as the minimum occupancy requirement to use express lanes. Right now, it's like HOV three plus, or it can be increased. And that will also help increase person throughput, as well as a dual-lane express lane system substantially increases the amount of revenue that can be provided to support programs such as for transit or for equity. And therefore, it kind of neutralizes the, the impact to a certain extent. More importantly, a dual-lane express lanes provides great travel time savings to provide improved traffic flow. And we have a lot of transit running in our express lane system as well. And the, what do you find in the dual-lane express lanes, which we have currently a mixture of this already in operations? And what we find is the dual-lane express lanes, the inner lane, the faster lane of the dual- of the dual lane express lanes actually has uninterrupted traffic flow and moves rather well. Where else the second lane can be kind of acts as for more for weaving purposes. Where the the general purpose lane, from the general purpose lane, express lanes, both are trying to weave to access the the lanes. And as such, you're kind of separating the the friction and it it provides an overall reliability. The you could also have a slower moving vehicle in a single lane operation, like a bus or something, and and you will have a platoon of slow moving vehicles. And it could lead to unsafe behavior, people trying to overtake a bus, for example. The with the single lane operation, what we also see, because here in the San Francisco Bay area. We have a continuous access configuration, which means the separation between the express lanes and the general purpose lanes is just a painted striping. So one can move over from one lane to another lane rather easily. And a lot of times you see a travel time, sorry, speed differential between the fast lane express lanes and the general purpose lane, and people tend to jump in in the last minute choosing to want to use the express lanes. It leads to incidents and it shuts down the system. So having a dual lane really helps improve with addressing safety and operations. And from a net revenue perspective. The i- it is, you you tend to almost have a generation of two to three times the revenue compared to a single lane express lanes over an extended period of time. And that is also the case in terms of toll rates. The dual lane express lane toll rates are far lower. Almost like a third of the toll rate of a single lane system, because a single lane has limited capacity. Gets congested and the toll rates tend to spike up especially during the peak period. So the point here is that we we do not want to make a decision. We want to make an informed decision. You don't just look at a one time high cost of capital investment and and increase in VMT and say, you know, we shouldn't widen any lanes to the system. So one has to look at all this various different category in making a more informed decision, which is right for the agency and for the particular facility in in question. Just to provide some context at the regional and state level. In the San Francisco Bay area region right now, the metropolitan organization is actually studying the possibility of tolling all lanes of the highway system in the region to to be able to generate some revenues and manage congestion and use much of those revenues towards supporting transit. And and at the state level. Road user charge is being piloted to see if that can be the model to influence drivers. To realize that they would pay more if they drive more and 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 influence your behavior that way and come up with a model that would replace the fuel based tax system. So at the end of the day, needless to say, there's a lot of different things we need to get take into consideration in moving towards implementing managed lanes in in California and and trying to meet the climate goals. It's an evolving process. There's much to be learned, you know, there could be unintended consequences sometime by not right sizing the facility. You could have traffic diversion on local and parallel roads leading to safety issues. Definitely from a geographical point of view, rural and urban areas are very different. And so that needs to be considered. I I think there's still a lot of room to evaluate the current methodologies used to identify VMT impact and its mitigation. So overall, there's a lot that all partners and agencies have to work together. But needless to say, you know, we all need to work towards trying to address the climate goals. And with that, I'll stop my presentation here and I'll be happy to take any questions and feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions out of outside this conference.
So Morali, good, good presentation, especially a lot of those trade offs between different geometric design features. And, you know, especially in a long term context with additionally what California is trying to do with the climate mitigation goals. I'm glad you kind of brought up the MTC's Next Generation Freeway Study. Something that's been kind of talked about here and there, at least with the managed lanes community, is not just adding a lane, but potentially converting an existing general purpose lane over to a managed lane. Is that something that at least at a high level has been talked about, discussed? Or is that something that hasn't been considered at all?
It is definitely part of the Silicon Valley Express Lanes program and currently the way we are delivering our program is we have over two hundred lane miles that we are trying to deliver that focuses on a segment that is environmentally approved. That's on the US one oh one eighty five corridor and the SR two thirty seven I eight eighty corridor. But our 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 program for the Santa Clara County wide also includes other hybrids that forms a network within our our county. That includes like I six eighty and I two eighty. We always proposed that those segments be considered for general purpose lane conversion. But we have not quite advanced to that stage in terms of getting the tolling authority to implement those. We are hoping to undertake some studies to help us move in that direction to understand what that really means. This is in a a solution that Caltrans has highlighted to all of us that is something that they're very supportive of. But I think agencies need to currently step up to undertake that GP lane conversion. Because at the end of the day, there is going to be a big pushback from the public and possibly politically. And that's kind of what is probably holding back some of this. I know Caltrans has provided or encouraged us with potential to fund some of this GP lane conversion in some fashion. So it is an evolving process. That is something that I think is a hybrid solution or an interim solution between express lanes, where you have one or two lanes to slowly getting GP lanes to be priced. Was this the MTC solution where all the lanes are priced? Because when you do that, as we mentioned, then we need to start looking at other things such as traffic diversion to parallel arterial roads. Is there transit to support shift in travel behavior and so on and so forth?
All right, we had a question entered the chat. It's a very interesting see pros and cons of single and dual lanes. It is difficult in practice to change from single. Is it difficult in practice to change from single to dual lanes? A question mark. What is the best recommended separator to switch between single and dual lanes?
Okay, if I understand this question right, maybe I'll come at it from a different angle. You know, would we consider building a single lane first and then expanding it to dual lane express lanes? There's a lot of challenges with that. Not not to mention the fact that you're going to build a second lane express lanes when a single lane is in operations. And the fact of the matter is the all the design and the and the cost and all the effort that goes into even future proof for a dual lane express lanes upfront. There is very marginal differences. And the other thing I would share in in implementing express lanes program is time is money. If we deliver our programs and we take longer time to do so, the cost keeps escalating. So it is prudent that we we really look at what is right sizing the facility and try to deliver it quickly and cost effectively. And and that is what I would say would be a better way to go. And was there a second question there? Recommended separator. Okay. Yeah, in California, we we have slightly different types of operations of carpool lanes. And a lot of the car express lanes are actually conversion of carpool lanes. And in the San Francisco Bay area, the the carpool lanes or even the express lanes are separated from the general purpose lane through skip striping. We call it continuous access. You can go in and out wherever you want. In Southern California, it's just the opposite. It's you have buffer separating the express lanes from the the general purpose lanes. And both the systems have its own advantages and disadvantages. If you have limited buffer, you have that uninterrupted flow that we talked about. So you have better traffic flow. But then you have this highly concentrated merging weaving in a short distance happening and that's one aspect of it. But the with the continuous access, the benefit is, you know, you allow access to anyone to access wherever they want. Because we do get a lot of public pushbacks saying, I want to use that express lanes. And if you have a limited buffer, if I miss the entrance, I have to wait for X number of miles to get in. And and similarly to get out, if you make a mistake, then you you have a much longer route. So there are different perspectives to how you deal with this. I know some other parts of the country installed some pylons or channelizers to separate between the two. But then you run into operations and maintenance because people hit those pylons, they do not respect it and you you need to replace them to to keep it up to date. So there are various, it's it really, I would think, mostly driven by the individual State Department of Transportation as to what they think is the best regional solution.
All right, next question on my list is, I think you had this in your presentation, but maybe you could restate this again. Are the toll revenues used for any transit capital investments? And is there a program that the revenue has resulted in the best bang for the buck?
The toll revenue is for, okay. Okay, that's a good question. The short answer is the express lanes program is being delivered in phases only because we do not have sufficient funding to deliver the program all at one go. So any net toll revenues is actually needed to help fund the next phases of the program. So that's how we go about doing it unless we are fortunate to get any grant money. And if you chase a grant money and if you have a dual lane express lane system and because of the concerns of VMT impact, you're not, it's going to be a very difficult situation. So we almost have to self finance ourselves. So if you do not have enough funding, that's what that's the first order of things that you do. But then I did share the example of our phase four express lanes, another segment of the highway on S T Route eighty five, where we received some carbon reduction program funds from Federal Highway Administration, which we are committing funds to go back to improve transit transit improvements or operations. So we are trying to balance the act. But the end of the day, if the overall program, the express lanes program is fulfilled. Our overarching goal is to fully support transit operations in Santa Clara County and have a steady stream of revenue because for those who might know in the transit world. Funding is the biggest issue for transit. And having a reliable source is 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 almost very essential to to plan and move forward. And if you have additional funds with transit, over and beyond that, you can add frequency more or new routes, you can reduce toll fares and so on and so forth.
All right, and the last question, I have one minute left here. What future research would you like to see done on this topic? I mean, do you want to better understand travel behavior? Do you want to look better look at environmental impacts? Anything else that it relates to managed lanes and pricing?
I don't think there's been much research done about, you know, like the table that I showed. I I think it's very one sided right now. If you add a lane, it increases VMT and therefore it's not good. It's a very blunt way of looking at all this. It would be great to have research done to show and looking at all these different categories and how this actually works out for the ultimate good.
That's definitely a good response. All right, we'll end it with that. Thank you, Morali, for a fantastic presentation and thanks for stepping up the last couple of weeks. And last but not least, we have Hong Yu Lu. He has an interesting technical presentation. He is from Georgia Tech. He is a PhD student in Dr. Randall Ginsler's group. And he'll graduate shortly and join the same research group as a research engineer in the fall. His research interests include vehicle emission and energy use modeling, dispersion modeling and high performance computing, microscopic traffic information, microscopic traffic simulation and managed lane assessment. And his presentation will be on an interesting technical topic called Identification of Electric Vehicles in Managed Lines. And Hong Yu, the floor is yours.
Hey, thanks, Nick. Sharing my screen. Can you all see and hear me?
I can hear and see you.
Okay. Let me make sure that I use a stopwatch so that I don't run over in twenty minutes.
I got you covered. I got you covered.
Thanks. So greetings, everyone. So my name is Hong Yu. I'm from Georgia Tech and I work with Dr. Guan and Dr. Ganser. I also have Zemin with me today. So he did all the model runs. So hopefully I will be able to take all of your questions, but if it's very, very technical, I will have to hand transfer that to Zemin. Essentially, we did a a a one year project for State Road and Tahoe Authority of Georgia. And we did that for occupancy and vehicle throughput and persons throughput assessment, but we also did the identification of electric vehicles. We actually ended up with more than just EVs, but we'll talk about that later. So essentially we have two items for today, data and model. Of course, we will start with a brief background and motivation section, then we will move to how we collected the video profiles. And then the modeling framework of machine vision. So let's start with a bit of context around electric vehicles and managed lanes. So same with Nick and others, I'm assuming that everyone here today knows what managed lanes are. Now, in some places, agencies gave special access for toll discounts to vehicles that use alternative fuels that include hybrids and others, but by far the most common one today is electric vehicles for EV. Because of that, detecting EVs can be really helpful, for example, to prevent toll evasion. And down the road, as more vehicles go electric and stop paying gas taxes. There is also a growing interest in using EV specific tolling as a potential replacement. So this is where our work actually starts to come in. How can we detect those EVs in a in a scalable way? Video, for example, can be a very good data source. But to build such a system that can identify EVs from videos, we had to put together a whole framework of machine vision models. The first step is basic. We detect and count the vehicles in the video. But from there, we also need to make sure we're picking out the best image of each vehicle. Since we're not looking at videos, not just photos, we need the Since we're not looking at videos, not just photos, we need the frame that gave us the best view. So once we have that, we zoom in on the license plate, we capture it, and then we read the plate number, the alphanumeric characters. That lets us do a few things. One is identifying alternative fuel vehicle plates. And in Georgia, they come with a little uh leaf icon. We also train models to directly identify the vehicle make and model information so that we can figure out whether it's an E V based on what type of car it actually is regardless of the plate. All of these relies on one thing, a library of labeled video images, a decent amount of training data to get these models working. So we've actually done two major data collection efforts that really laid the foundation of this machine vision study, both of them funded by the State Road and Towhee Authority. The first one was back in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, focused on express toll lanes uh corridors. The goal was to look at how vehicle occupancy, vehicle throughput and persons throughput changed after the openings of new express lane facilities. We essentially covered uh two big corridors because we didn't finish I seventy five south because of COVID. Uh, the first corridor, the seventy five, five seventy five north source corridor, which are reversible toll lanes marked in light green on the map and the eighty five express lane extensions, which are hot lanes marked in red. You can also see the eighty five original hot lanes in blue. So from that effort, we captured a substantial amount of data over a two-year period, about one point six million vehicle images, and we extracted one point three million license plates. We also paired the Georgia plates to vehicle registration database to get the vehicle make and model information. That gave us our first large-scale task set for building and refining our uh vision pipeline. Now, fast forward to last year, we zoomed in on four H O V facilities inside the two eighty five parameter around metro Atlanta. Uh, I seventy five north, I eighty five north, the downtown connector and seventy five ninety five south. So this round, we we were not just looking at occupancy and throughput, but also at the fleet composition, especially alternative fuel vehicles. We collected over one point one million uh license plates in this uh three-month effort. So uh here's how we actually collected the videos in these studies. We use camcorders as mounted on overpasses. We positioned them behind traffic so we could clearly see the rear of each vehicle. Each camera typically covers two lanes at a time. Uh, on the left, you can see uh one of the camcorders that we use. And on the right, that's a sample snapshot from the video. You can see how this setup gives us a a clean view of each vehicle and plate, even during peak traffic, of course, uh plates are are covered in in this sample. Uh, the cameras capture both the vehicle body and the license plate in the in one single frame, which gave us what we need for both vehicle classification and plate recognition. Uh, so how do we actually do that? Well, uh, back in twenty twenty, we relied on a fairly typical machine vision pipeline to handle the vehicle and and handle the plate image capture. We use Facebook's Detectron two framework to automatically crop the vehicles from the image. I can see an example on the left. The model does a crop based on confidence levels and then passes that image to an automated license plate recognition system or A L P R. These are third-party models. But the issue came when the model, when the plates were partially or completely blocked. In those cases, the system fell back on tracking only based on movements of the bounding boxes, and that was kind of fragile. Blocking or erratic motion could easily cause a model to split split one vehicle into multiple IDs or just miss a vehicle completely. We had quite a number of overcounting back then, and we had to do manual cleanup, which really limited the scalability of the job. I stayed up several nights to do that. So overall, it did work at that time, but it is totally outdated today. So now in this year, we've upgraded our framework using a framework using Yolo, which stands for You Only Look Once. It's a state-of-the-art machine vision algorithm that's uh fast, accurate, and especially good at real-time detection. We train our models using a data set of labeled vehicle images, and the system does two things in parallel. It detects where the objects are in the image and what type it is. That's number one. Number two, it classifies the cropped image to identify the vehicle type like sedan, S U V, pickup, and so on. So this upgrade significantly improved both the efficiency and accuracy of our recognition tasks, especially under those challenging conditions, including occlusions. So Yolo V eleven has really been the foundation for the rest of our modeling work. Um, now let us walk through what we actually do, what we actually did to train the models. It all starts with annotation. So we developed a web-based tool to manually label the images of the training data set with details like the plate location, vehicle type, uh make and model, and and even model year uh groups. After that, we augmented the data to make the model more robust, which is uh applying a variety of transformations like adjusting the brightness and contrast, rotating the images, and even slightly shifting the crop, all to make sure the model can handle the uh real-world variations. So once the uh data set was ready, we configured Yolo. We set the uh number of classes, input image size, and and all the task-specific parameters. Then we kick off training. We monitored uh the accuracy and losses as they learned iteratively. So we actually only used two R T X Titan graphic cards to do that, so it's not that resource incentive as we expected. Now that the models are trained, here is how we actually use them through a two-stage process, detection and classification. First, in the detection stage, the model takes a raw image and run it through the detection pipeline. It outputs bounding boxes and class labels. At this time point, we uh detect the full image, uh full vehicle in the original frame. We capture the best image of that vehicle, and we also detect the plate and crop it separately. So for each detection, we essentially end up with two clean images, one for the vehicle and one for the plate. Then comes the uh classification stage. Here we feed those cropped images into classification models, which is also powered by Yolo. And the model figures out what type of plate it is, what uh what kind of body type, and also the vehicle make and model. So essentially, this framework allows us to go from a raw video profile to a fully labeled video a vehicle record with a minimum or even no manual intervention. So um, let's take a closer look at the detection stage. First, we use Yolo to detect the location of every car in each frame. Then we apply ByTrack, which is a tracking algorithm built into Yolo V eleven to track those vehicles across frames and make sure we are assigning a consistent ID and uh and unique ID to each one. We also apply a filtering rule. We only keep vehicles that entered from the bottom of the frame, not from the side of the frame. This is to avoid duplicate detection of lane-changing behaviors. Now, in terms of counting, here's how we further avoid duplicates. We place a detection line near the top quarter of the frame. A vehicle is only counted when it crosses that line and only the first time it crosses line. Since ByTrack algorithm gives us a unique ID for each car, we can make sure we never count it twice, even if it's visible, it's visible across multiple frames. And like I just talked about, we do this, uh, we do every lane separately, which is super helpful for comparing the H O V lanes versus the uh general purpose lanes. So then for uh license plate detection, we zoom in a little more. We trained a model specifically to detect the license plate region within the uh vehicle image. So the training data set included about one thousand hand-labeled examples, and we made sure to include brightness adjustments as well. So finally, we select the highest confidence bounding box for each vehicle. So we only keep the best plate image for recognition. So once we've isolated the plate region on the vehicle, we pass that cropped image into our character recognition pipeline. This part is uh pretty straightforward. We use a Yolo-based model to detect where the plate is, crop that out, and then send it to a model that performs character-level recognition. The uh character uh recognition reads each character independently and reconstructs the full plate number from there. So the uh diagram at the bottom, it shows the that flow from that full vehicle image to plate detection and then character uh recognition. Now, um, once we read that uh read that uh plate, we also want to understand what type of plate it is. So we run one more classifier that determines whether the plate is a Georgia standard plate and alternative fuel vehicle plate, which has a leaf icon, a temporary tag, a specialty plate, or something from outside the plate, outside the state. Uh, now we can actually infer the uh E V ownership without the actual registration data just by spotting that uh green leaf icon. So here's an example of the plate types, um essentially five categories. First, the standard Georgia plate, then the Georgia alternative fuel plate, which has that uh, you know, small leaf icon on that. We also identify temporary tags, uh specialty plates. And by the way, Georgia has uh actually over three hundred designs of these plates. And finally, out-of-state plates. So uh you might say that some of these visual variations variations are really subtle. So the question is, how well does our system work? We tested the model based on a verification data set with one thousand total plates, including one, one hundred and three uh alternative fuel plates. This is random picking, so it's not a wrong number. We had a perfect recall on the alternative fuel vehicles. We correctly identified all one hundred and three of them. On the flip side, we only had three false positives. There are three out of eight hundred and ninety-seven non-alternative fuel plates that were misclassified. So overall, the accuracy is pretty high, more than ninety-nine percent. You can see the uh confu- confusion matrix on the right showing how the classifications um broken down across all plate types. So we're confident that this model can support large-scale, real-time and automated E V detection, especially in a state like Georgia where you have uh a reliable E V signal. So uh this table, which is really important, uh this is an example of the results of uh alternative fuel vehicle percentages. This is Morris Mill Road at seventy-five evening peaks. Uh, if we look at the table, we can see how the percentage values vary across lanes. Look at lane number one, which is the H O V lane. It's nearly nine percent of vehicles with an A F V plate. But as we move into the general purpose lanes, that number drops dramatically. We're talking about less than one percent in some cases and as low as zero point six percent in lane number three. So even the ramp lane is sitting at around two point six percent, which is still far below what we see in the H O V lane. So again, this highlights the huge variability across lanes and it shows why uh using just the regional average E V rate would completely miss these patterns. We actually submitted a standalone paper uh to T R B this year about the uh the comparing the emission and energy use results across the uh different scenarios of penetration rates. Uh, the caveat, however, and this is really important. There there is a also a limitation in using A F V plates as a proxy for E V ownership. So in Georgia, only half of or about half of the E V owners actually opt in to get the uh green leaf icon. Uh, it's a special registration that you uh have to pay for. So we know we're underestimating total E V preference by a pretty big mar- margin. And our preliminary work also indicates that the uh the green leaf icon rates also vary across counties and even across make and models. So this is what we uh what motivated us to develop the models that uh directly identify E Vs from from their images. So how do we actually do that without relying on the plates at all? Uh, that's uh that's where this real-time plate-free identification pipeline comes in. We uh start with the vehicle image and run it through a multi-stage recog- uh recognition process. First, we classify the body type, then the make, and then the model. Once we have those pieces, we run a cross-verification step. This helps to uh filter uh filter out the inconsistent predictions like uh if the model, a vehicle model doesn't match the the body type. And then based on the final recognized make and model, we check it against a reference list that we built uh using the manufacturing uh manufacturer documentation so that we know exactly which makes and models are electric, hybrid, or gas-powered. So this lets us flag E Vs in real time, even if we don't have the plate information or if the plate information is unreadable or if they are not using a leaf icon at all. So here is an example of what it looks like in practice. We've got vehicles like Tesla Model Three, Nissan Leaf or Prius Hybrid. All of those are clearly E V or hybrid vehicles. But then you've got also conventional vehicles like um Toyota Camry or Honda Accord, uh Mazda C X thirty, uh this is uh the car I have. Let's break down the uh two-stage pipeline for E V identification. So in stage three, we have it uh for multi-attribute recognition. We run two tasks in parallel. First, we classify the body type using twelve categories like sedans, S U Vs, pickup trucks, and so on. And second, we predict the vehicle make using a classifier classifier trained on thirty-three different manufacturers. And actually, instead of relying on one guess, we actually keep the two, top two predictions for the make based on the confidence scores and pass both of these make predictions to the next stage for a more refined classification. So stage three is where we identify the specific vehicle model. Here we restrict each model classifier to the mix predicted in the last stage. So if the system thinks this is a Tesla or Nissan, we only consider models from these two uh manufacturers. We also include uh some consistency consistency checks, like making sure the predicted model actually matches a detected body type and flagging low-confidence results for optional manual review, especially in edge cases. Once we have the predicted make and model, we compare it to the known list of E Vs. And if it matches, we label it as electric vehicles. So this diagram shows a food example of how the pipeline works. We start with a crop video. Uh, in this case, it's a pickup truck. The system identifies the body type as pickup, then make as Rivian and the model as R one T. And it cross- verifies all of those predictions and confirms this is Rivian R one T and it is an electric vehicle. So with just a video image, we can confidently confidently label this video uh vehicle, I'm sorry, as an E V. And so far, the results from this processing uh process has been extremely processing, promising. It gave us high precision without relying on the actual license plate information. So uh to wrap things up, this multi-stage machine vision framework, it gives us a powerful, scalable and real-time way to understand what's really happening out there on the road. One of the biggest advantage is that the video data collection is inexpensive, but it generates huge data sets. The framework can do quite a bit. It can detect, account, and classify vehicles. It can capture both vehicle and license plate images. It can de- decode the plates and it can potentially link to the registration records if needed. And it can identify E Vs based on green leaf plates or based on vehicle make and model information. And all of these can be done in real time. And we're currently expanding this to include model year recognition, which will uh open up more possibilities like emission and energy use modeling by vehicle age. And on the tech side, we're working on scaling this up through uh the high-performance computing clusters at Georgia Tech so that we can handle even larger volumes of data. Uh, so uh basically, the uh framework is in a strong position and is ready for deployment in more complex real-world transportation settings. Uh, that is everything for my presentation and I'm happy, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thanks, Hong Yu. That was a extremely useful presentation. Uh, I say as a researcher, this is kind of unique because oftentimes when people look at E V use, they look at just the registration part of it. They don't look at the actual travel activity part. And what you presented is, at least what I see, kind of pretty novel and unique because oftentimes with uh, you know, doing E V research, people often think like, well, E Vs typically travel less mileage because of the range anxiety, because, you know, people tend to be more local. But this is an actual like, you know, way to actually look at actual travel behavior. So that that's a a great presentation. Uh, and one question here from Miss Vera, how'd you handle the class imbalance? For example, cases with rare vehicle and out-of-state plates?
So we're not doing anything in particular with out-of-states uh vehicles because we don't have the the vehicle registration access to them. Uh, for the rare vehicles, as long as uh we can identify them with human eyes, we are able to classify them.
Awesome. So uh you mentioned pretty much the ability to generate a large data set using this process. Can you talk about the computing and time resources uh necessary to basically kind of train the model and do a kind of generate an output?
So essentially, it is a real-time processing, uh 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 a real-time process. Every second of the video takes one second process in our uh in our lab. Uh, like I said, we only have two R T X Titan graphic cards, so it's not a lot of resources. Uh, essentially, we only did archive videos. We didn't do any uh video streams. So if we're we're going to um apply this to uh 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 law enforcement system, for example, we will need more resources. At Georgia Tech, we have a a very uh good high-performance cluster called Pace. I'm using that for my dissertation. It is a lot of graphic uh graphic cards, so we're able to process even real-time uh video, video uh uh video profiles. We're we're actually meeting with Serta this Friday to talk about that possibility. Uh, I'm sorry, what was the other question?
Uh, the other question I had was, I think that was at the computing resources for that. And I was gonna ask about, uh, can you talk about the labeling to uh train the model? Like, what are the steps that you did to do uh that process?
Actually, that was more expensive. I mean, green power is really uh uh costing us much more compared with uh uh, you know, uh electric bills. Actually, that was more expensive. I mean, power is really uh uh costing us much more compared with uh uh, you know, uh, electric bills. So, uh, we did uh iterative training process, and I didn't talk about that in the in the slides because I didn't have time. Um, so we essentially started with a small dataset of one thousand labeled uh images, and we iteratively add more images as we, you know, manually rev- review the confidence uh scores, and we add more uh uh manual work to that until we reach a five thousand image uh capability for each of the vehicle classes. So essentially, this is a um not a, you know, a a random, random process, but also a iterative process that saves us uh budget.
All right, and kind of a follow-up to this, uh, one thing that's been investigated for a number of years, back decades, is uh verification of occupancy enforcement, counting uh actual people, vehicle, given how you're looking at the vehicle's shape. Is it possible to actually look at the uh the shape of like uh people within within vehicles traveling?
Uh, you mean with video profiles?
Uh, video profile, so like counting the number of people in cars for HOV compliance.
So we actually did that. So, um, we, this is not the first time we did uh occupancy. We started actually back in a decade ago, back in twenty twelve, I think. Um, so we always used uh traditional roadside occupancy assessment where we employed a undergraduate research assistant to stand by the roadside and use a tablet app to count how many people are in the car. Um, the the big issue for that is that this is expensive, and sampling has been a big issue because we can't cover a large, you know, a temporal range or a many uh many locations. Uh, the the issue with using video profiles to do a total automation of of occupancy collection has always been the reflection on on windshields and side windows. We tried that with GoPros. So at this moment, um, the best pro- uh uh approach seems to be uh number one, collecting traditional roadside uh occupancy profiles, and number two, try to pair those records with video profiles so that we know exactly the license plate, the the body type, and and, you know, the color and everything, all the attributes of the vehicles. We did a test run. We did a a few test runs with GoPros uh on on the head of the of the URAs, so that when they observe the vehicles as they go, we can see exactly what vehicle they're looking at so that we can pair that information to the collected occupancy record that they entered to the uh tablet app. Uh, this is still ongoing work. Uh, the the results will be forthcoming in the fall uh and in the winter. We will uh submit that results to a journal publication.
Awesome. And we got another question in the chat here. Uh, does the video recognition still work well at night in bad weather, or is it mostly effective during the day and in clear conditions?
Surprisingly, yes. So like I said, uh, uh, we applied uh contrast and brightness uh uh corrections. Uh, this is not a very comprehensive study because we tend to avoid bad weather that that kind of hurt uh the uh that kind of hurt the cameras. I don't, I don't, I don't want the cameras to be under the rain, but uh under low visibility, the cameras tend to do a better job compared with naked eyes.
Okay, the next question, uh, asking about privacy concerns. Have you had any concerns raised by the public or any other agency officials that have limited access to license plate data? And, you know, any steps to make sure that it's like an anonymous process compliant with IRB? Uh, talk about any permissions you had to get from Georgia DOT?
Yeah, that's a very good question. So number one, we have the concurrence from Certa and from GDOT. And number two, we did run IRB for every one of the data collectors that we have on the group. Only uh authorized personnel, which is uh the four names that you see on the slide deck, only us have access to the actual video profiles. The other students, they collect occupancy, but they don't have access to the license plate records. Uh, well, essentially, this is public data. People might argue that everyone can go out and collect video profiles. But we still, uh, uh, we still, uh, we're still very careful in terms of how we store and process the data. We have uh right here a a secure server room. We're only authorized team members can enter, and every computer is protected by password.
Awesome. And kind of a clarification I had, you mentioned a vehicle model year. Can you kind of talk about its importance for EVs? Because when see, when people see the word EV, they assume even a vehicle like ten years ago had the same tailpipe emissions as one today.
So, uh, uh, there's two uh the two things to to mention in that case. So as technology uh improves, we do have, we do have better cars with less emissions and and smaller energy use. That's number one. Number two is as as vehicles, as the mileage increases, your vehicle age, right? It doesn't perform as well as uh as as good as a uh uh a new vehicle anymore. So that also adds to the emission and energy use part. Uh, in terms of our study, if we look at the uh the 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 shape of the vehicle, the layout of the of the vehicle, it kind of changes over years, but not not essentially every year. So it might be that Rev four has the same design uh from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen and the new design in the year of twenty nineteen. That's where we labeled the uh the uh the the model year group, but we can't dig more uh into the particular model year without accessing the the registration database. Again, uh, they they might like uh five years of the model years, they they could all look the same to us.
All right, and the absolute last question, kind of like one minute left. Uh, did you face any unexpected challenges uh for onsite video recording?
A lot, and the most significant one being concerned citizens who always play around with our recorders.
All right. I think that's a good one to end on. So, uh, thanks, uh, Hong Yu. Fantastic presentation. In fact, I'd like to thank all of our presenters. Uh, you know, beginning off with Miss Hira, then Daniel, Marali, and Hong Yu, uh, all the presenters and myself, we kind of pieced together this presentation in the last uh four weeks, really. We had a, you know, organizational meeting. And it's a lot of kudos to the, uh, I'd say, the former members of the Managed Lane Committee. I'd like to give a shout out to Carlos Campo. He was on the call earlier. I think he had to jump off. Uh, he was the former chair of the Managed Lane Committee, kind of dragged me into this. And also a kudos to Kara Kaufman for eagerly uh accepting our uh our work and our presentation. So, uh, thanks to all of you on this call. I think we can end it and enjoy the rest of the conference.
Thank you.